All right. Welcome to the town of Southwest Ranch's budget meeting. If we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So this is our first budget hearing. We did have a budget workshop before this, and we will have a second budget hearing in about two weeks. But we are, we have several budget items that we need to go over. We will start off with administrative comments.
So Mayor, thank you. We have a presentation tonight from our town financial administrator and the controller tonight that will go over the items on the budget hearing that will need to be covered, specifically the fire assessment, the solid waste assessment, the tentative millage, and then the first reading of the budget ordinance. As we've gone over in the budget workshop, we are bringing those items to you, the tentative millage, the assessment rates at no increase from last year. They'll go into it with greater detail, but we're proud to bring that before you tonight for discussion.
Very good. Thank you, Russell. Emile.
Here we go. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, staff, and the public. So we're here to present to you, as the town administrator indicated, the first budget hearing, which essentially includes the final adoption of the fire assessment as well as the solid waste assessment. Okay, with that on the first slide, it's pretty much what we're trying to do. Here, we're going to do the adoption of the solid waste and the fire protection assessment rates as well as the first public hearing, as I mentioned before. This is where we are now, and there's two items left once we finish this presentation or this hearing. As a requirement, we are required to advertise for the, for the final budget hearing, for the ordinance, and the tentative millage rate adoption. But today, on the third item of the slide, that's where we pretty much are. With that, as the town administrator indicated, council provided guidance and directive to us during the budget workshop. One which was, are indicated here, and we'll go into details as we move forward. The first one is that in the budget, in the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget, we have listed a project manager position to assist the town administrator. Council directed us to, that it was time to move forward with the change, and then that change would represent an additional to that budget amount of $44,897. There was also requested to include an agricultural liaison, which is going to be within the Parks Department as a part timer. That represents an amount of $27,989. The second one was the pilot program of composting, which is going to be a pilot that it would include about 100 homes, or at least 100 homes, and this cost would be approximately $28,800. And finally, we had included in the fiscal year 2425 budget, a car-mounted radar unit, which included 14 units. It was best option to proceed with seven of those units in fiscal year 24, which is why we're essentially reducing it in the fiscal year 2425. The reason of not an even, even amount on the reduction is because the $33,522 include all their costs, not just the radar units. That's the reason why you see 13 as the reduction amount. Those costs will be included into the 2425 proposed budget with a net budget increase for 202425 of $88,424. With that summary, we go right into the first items, which is the fire assessment rate. Here, as indicated and directed, there's not going to be a year-over-year increase on the residential rate. That's going to be, it's going to remain the same, 758.63, as indicated in the slide. On the ag rate, it came up slightly less than it was last year because we, we looked at the methodology report, and the methodology report indicated a slower, lesser, lower amount in 2425. To keep it fair, well, we left it at a lower amount representing that minor increase year-over-year. This here, it represents what the town stands within the municipalities in Broward. And as you look at that last column to the right, it represents no change year-over-year. It's important to know, to indicate that most municipalities include subsidies within the general fund to the fire rate. The town is utilizing a cost recovery, so it's passing up the cost to the residents.
Emile, just a question on that last slide. I see some other municipalities, particularly some around us, that are jumping pretty dramatically. Any idea what's going on in Pines? It's more or less increased their cost 50%?
I do not. I usually just go off of the change year-over-year. I don't specifically go into the municipality, but I can actually get that information from you.
Yes, some other, some of the other cities are jumping pretty dramatically, and Weston's creeping up on us pretty quickly, too.
It's, 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 I mean, basically, I don't have the facts to tell you, but I do know that year-over-year contractual agreements increases those amounts, those rates.
Right.
In our specific case, council may smart move to guarantee those rates by signing up into a long-term contract.
Thank you.
Your work.
Emile, one other point I just wanted to make there. So a lot of those other municipalities that we listed here, this is not their full fire cost. This is, much of their fire is also subsidized in their millage, and ours is not, right? This is, this is 100%, all of our, very transparent, like we've always been, that this is our fire cost, not subsidized by anything else. So some of the other ones that may look lower may in fact actually be higher than ours because it's being subsidized through millage. Is that correct?
That is essentially correct, yes.
Thank you.
So with that, we're going to the next portion, which is the solid waste rate. Here again, there is no year-over-year increase as required and directed us to proceed. This is now the time for me to mention that there was a subsidy for which council provided directives to us for three years in the amount of $502,832, of which last year would only utilize $391,000. So this year, in order for us to keep the rates the same for, for fire, we only needed to utilize $252,000. So council provided, directed to us to utilize the remaining amount to keep the solid waste rate the same. That represented an increase year-over-year of $263,000. So the difference of that $250,000, which we utilized from the subsidy, then we pulled roughly close to $13,000 from contingency that we have put aside for the true-up, for the solid waste agreement. So in this case, we were able to pull all the funds without having to impact rate, millage rate, or any other sources other than the one that the council has already predetermined. And this is just a summary of what just indicated, that there's no change from the previous year. And as indicated on the second portion, which is the bulk waste average cost, it's average since we have, it's based on last size. So we pretty much go of all the rates and then make an average of that, and there's no change year-over-year. And then, yes, Mayor?
No, go ahead. No, I thought you were through. Go ahead, finish up.
Okay. I'm jumping into the next item, so if you, if you, this is the time if you want to.
Well, I was wondering if we wanted to open it up to the public on those two items before we go to the next item.
That's imperative.
Let's do that rather than getting it all. Let me open it up. Public comment, is there any public comment on either of these two? Please come up to the, to the mic.
First of all, I was asked to read this into the record by Mike Rodriguez at Celio Farms. I've never done this. Number one, the fire assessment classifies the buildings on the property as industrial. They are not industrial buildings. The town should correct this error. Two, the Broward County Property Appraiser has classified the buildings as accessory buildings and classified the property as agriculture. Number three, Broward County Property classified property as agriculture in 2024, and the VAB confirmed it was agriculture in 2023. Therefore, the town should correct the fire assessment classification of the property to match similar agricultural properties in the town. Given that, I looked at the property record, and I don't know if y'all are aware, but do you know that the accessory farm buildings on a property, they were posed to be, I think, at 1.0408, and now .98, so I'll round it off a dollar a square foot. If you have a goat pen, you know, to keep the coyotes out, and it's 10 by 12, which is 120 square feet, do you realize the town is charging $120 per year for an ag building? That's how it's classed. I happened to look at the property record, and you know, if you look at the, the building card, it gives you, and the square feet there, I think it was 45 something, matched the square feet on the trim notice, and it does say industrial. But I looked, a goat house of 120 square feet is being charged $120 a year fire fee. I don't know if y'all realize that. The other thing is I was told by Russell that you only have two fees. You have residential and non-residential.
Three.
Pardon? Oh, three? Is the other one industrial?
No.
What is, what? Oh, okay. Vacant land.
Right.
Vacant land, residential, and then all others. Okay. Anyway, I didn't know if you knew that you were charging a dollar a square foot. So if you have a goat house or whatever, barn, it probably didn't cost $120 to build it. It's $120 a year for fire fees. That's one thing.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I'd just like to correct the record when he says that y'all are giving the $250,000 from ad valorem taxes to help keep from an increased cost in fire fee. The ad valorem taxing is partly y'all, and then it's the rest of us because that's our ad valorem taxes. And also, ad valorem taxes are up to $10,000, are deductible on our tax returns. However, fees aren't. So that's one thing you might consider why some cities are doing it one way and some cities are another. But anyway, I just wanted to give you this. And can somebody ask about a goat barn or a goat house? I mean, you're paying more per year than you paid to build it.
Any other public comment?
I don't know if y'all remember, a doctor who owned on Malaluka, a barn. And I happened, Andy was here at the time, and he hired a lawyer to fight all of you because his fine, I mean, his fire was $17,000 for his barn. And there were a couple of others that were, were picked out the same way. He spent over $30,000. I wound up being the mediator. I went to Keith. Keith said that I should go to the town administrator and try to set up some sort of a conference between them. I had to get permission from his lawyer, which I did. They eventually worked it out because the man said, "I've paid 30,000, and it's climbing, and I owe 15,000. This is like out of control." So the town settled for 7,000, and he wound up paying 7, which ultimately, the next year, went back to 500, whatever it was, 500 and something. But the man sold his barn. It now belongs to V., Heidi, the one that had the champion Olympic horses. The point is, we ran the man out of town, literally, and he had bought it for his daughter, and he had nowhere to go. This is the way this town operates. I'm sorry. You know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be fair about this, we have mega mansions here. We got a 6,500-square-foot house over there. First of all, it isn't even paying taxes yet. He's paying $10. But when he does pay taxes, is his fire gonna be 500 or $750? Or is he gonna pay by the square footage? Because he's got 6,500 square feet over there, not counting the other two houses at 20,000 each. My point is, we are not commercial, and yet you're identifying these properties as commercial. That build, that barn, the reason you taxed it that way was you said it was commercial. And ultimately, they fixed it the next year. But it cost the man 30,000 plus he wound up paying us 7, so he saved 7. I'm telling you, all are at it again. That's all I can say.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening. Good evening. I'm not very good at this, but my name is Jerry Calabrese. I live on East Palomino. I moved to this town because I wanted to build a fish farm. And I read all the regs and rules of what I had to do to build this fish farm. I came before the town council, and the only person left is Steve Bright Cruz, and he, I was allowed to do it with five votes, four and zero against. At the time, I had, I have 2.34 acres, which is pretty standard in that area on Palomino. And when I bought the house, it was a 1,600-square-foot house. And I basically had almost an acre on the left side, an acre on the right side. And I went to Michelle Melgren's office, and I sat down in front of her, and there was a young gentleman there, I can't remember his name. But he said, "This is exactly what we want in this town. We want people to come here, and we want them to do agriculture that's legitimate." And I said, "Well, what do I need to do to be legitimate?" And I read the book cover to cover. And I invited council members to come over and see my plan, and which most of them did. I went, I went before the council, and I was accepted as being able to put this building there. And I did pull the permit. I didn't just do it with agricultural, and then, you know, at the time, Keith Polikoff said if I were to have done that, and if I ever passed away and gave the building to my son or something like that, the building would have had to come down. So I paid the fees, and one of the things that came up was Michelle Melgren says that, okay, there was like 20 items that I had to go through. I'm sorry it's taken long, but it's very important to me.
Okay.
She says, "Look, you have to go to the fire department and get this signed off." Well, this was a very unique building. It's all solid poured concrete with twin Ts of concrete. And the reason for that was, "I'm growing coral on the roof." And it was, you know, something I brought up back then, and people commented, "Oh, why are you doing that? Are you closer to the sun when it's on the roof?" But anyway. When I went to the fire department, she wanted me to get fire sprinklers put in the building. The fire marshal looked at my plans and said, "I'm signing this off. There's, there's no commercial in your town, and there's no, this is a cement building, and there's no need for fire sprinklers." I brought it back to her, and she said, "Fine." The house, so, so I built this 4,000-square-foot building with a second floor of about 2,000 square feet. And I've been there now 12 years. I've been very successful. And I've been getting a fire fee, starting out at like $1,500, plus the house fee, then 2,000, then last, a couple of years ago, 5,000. This year, $7,000. That's $25 each day of the week for a building that will not burn down. There's only been two barn fires in this town in 40 years, and they're wood. So a couple of years ago, when I was, came in here to talk to the people here on how to design my new house and recommendations on how I can make my expenses less, talked to Andy Burns, and Andy Burns says, "Talk to," there was a financial guy here, I'm sorry.
Marty.
Martin Sherwood.
Yes.
And I said, "Marty, what, what do I do with this, this fee here?" And he says, "What you need to do is connect your building to your house, and you'll have one fire fee, and it'll be a residential fire fee." I took it as, out of his word. I checked with Andy. He said, "That's what will happen." Not only did I just get charged the $7,000 for fire fee, but I also was building the house for the last two years, 2022, 2023. I just got my permit in May of this year, and they charged me full taxes on the property in 2022, 2023, including fire. No CO for that, for that house. I'm very concerned. I want to know who I can sit down with and get this straight.
Okay.
I believe I'm like being picked out to make up whatever balance this town needs to make up.
Okay. We've gone way over, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to stop there. I will tell you this, that we will follow up. Russell, let's make sure we follow up. Let's do some research on it. Let's find out what's going on. At the end of the day, we want to be fair. We want to be right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. I have some comments based on what we just heard, but let's, let's finish off. Well, so I will. Well, it's a little bit fresher. I appreciate Gay, what she said. That actually happened during the two years that I was off the council, between 2018 and 2020. And getting that resolved was one of my priorities in 2020 when I got here. And, and that was what we did. So if I believe all those, and you brought up one, but you're, you're absolutely correct. There was actually more than just one. And, and I believe we addressed all those. If there is something new similar to what Jerry was talking about here, then, then we need to be, if you can alert us to that, we'll, we'll take a look at those as well. The idea is to be, is to be fair. Good. Let us know. Let us know. We want, we want to do what's right. We want to do what's fair. And I think the other thing was Jerry, and we're gonna take a look into that. So I think we're good.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I want to clarify for a gross statement that was made there, that the gentleman was driven out of the town. That is complete falsehood because I know Dr. Earbar. I can, I confer with him a couple of times a year. He lives on Hancock.
He's still there.
He's still on Hancock. His home is on Hancock. It is not a, I mean, he had that extra property over there, and he sold it.
And the reason his taxes went up dramatically was, he was using it as a daycare center, if you recall, in those discussions. So all that has been resolved, and now it's where it should be.
Right. All right.
We're talking about the doctor.
Yes, Dr. Doug.
All right.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Can I just address some of, some of the other comments, Mayor?
Sure. Yeah, please.
We heard about growing coral. The building has never, I don't know if it's ever been growing for coral. I just looked at it at the property appraiser's office. The roof has no coral. That was the original intent. Now it's got solar panels.
I know it was for a while, but I don't know. Yeah, I don't know today.
I believe Sea Vision is located there, which is a aquarium manufacturing company. So that might, you know, change things.
That's why, that's why I want Russell to take a look.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. I don't, I don't want to get into a back and forth. Jerry, we're, we're gonna take a look at it. We're gonna have some conversations. We'll loop you in, make sure that, you know, we're all up to speed. Okay? All right. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none. Emile.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. For that, we go, with that, we go into the tentative military first public hearing. Here, the town is maintaining the same military as we have for the last two years. This is gonna be our third year at 3.90. Currently, we rank third among the municipalities in Broward County. These are, those are the remaining municipalities. This is a graph as to indicate how the military has been gradually, gradually going down for the town. As a matter of fact, the 3.90 is the lowest it's been a little over 10 years. And with that, we go into the last portion of the presentation, which is the first, the tentative budget, first public hearing, which is adopted through an ordinance. Here, it shows as to what the general fund by function total amount is for this upcoming budget year. It's $23,236,132. It's important to mention that the proposed budget that was deducted in July 25 was $22,898,669. That difference mostly is attributable to the utilization of the subsidy from the fire assessment. The fire, the fire assessment subsidy in the amount, a little over $500,000, was not included based on non-direction at the time. Now that we know 252,000 will be utilized for the subsidy of the fire, that's, that's the difference. We, the special assessment revenue went down by that amount because we are subsidizing that revenue portion from the subsidy. And how is the town going to be spending those funds? Pretty much, it gives you a breakdown percentage-wise and amount, what makes up that $23 million plus. And it's important to mention that the operating expenses, which is $12.3 million, is inclusive of public safety, which accounts for a little over $8 million or pretty much 64.9% of the $12 million, and 34.6% of the general fund. And to be more precise, that amount is $8,031,000. And with that, we conclude the presentation for tonight. If any further questions on the two last items, we'll be able to assist.
Great. Thank you, Emile. Is there, let me open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on those two items? Either the millage or the budget? Go ahead, Laurie.
Laurie Parrish, I'm just curious that you're all trying to take credit for holding the millage rate at 3.9%. But when you lowered it, was when you took the fire fee out of the millage and put it into a non-ad valorem fee?
Wrong.
That's incorrect, but.
Okay. Then answer that. And I'd like the one about the dollar a square foot for a goat house, too, if you can. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. It's good to see all you guys. What's up, Richard? All right. Millage rate hasn't gone down in a while, right? That's how we get paid as a town. Property values has gone through the roof, so that benefits some, benefits who's selling. But if we gave back something to the residents, a reduction, something slight, you know what that shows? It shows good faith, goodwill. Our Parks Department is short on money, absolutely. So a reduction would hurt the whole picture. But if we are increasing values, right? Property appraiser has said so, I think 10 to 15%. Why not a slight reduction? What's wrong with that? It's, it's, it's a gesture, you guys are doing something with the former property that's gonna be a private venture, public-private venture, that's gonna get a big windfall. There's nothing wrong with the millage rate reduction. Nothing to be, yeah, it hasn't happened in a while, but if you got something going up, the other one could come down slightly. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment and answer Mr. Garotti. We allocated half a million dollars back to the residents in form of keeping the solid waste and the fire fee flat. They were both going up. So that, that should answer your question. We're giving something back. That was calculated.
Yep. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, maybe I will. My recollection that the, and Emile may be in. My recollection that the, and Emile, maybe I'll clarify, in 2020, when three of us were elected up here, the millage was, wasn't it 4.25?
The total.
The real.
Was 4.8311. That included a T-store.
Correct.
Millage that was included. But it's important to mention that even though we call it a T-store millage, it was never listed within the tax bill as a T-store millage. It was just a reference for the residents and council to know the portion that was allocated to it.
So, taking out the T-is-door portion, it would be 4.25? I think that's the number.
4.2125.
2125, okay.
So, we've lowered.
So, we've actually lowered it from 2020 until today, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
You work.
And I think the other thing that's worth noting on that is all of our other expenses have not set still, right? Inflation has been crazy over the last couple of years. We have contracts, public safety, we have the, the waste contract. All those things have gone up, and it's a real, our, our administration is to be commended, the council and, and everyone who works on it is to be commended for holding the line rather than seeing things go up, because expenses have gone up significantly. And not only that, but we have increased services in a lot of different ways. So, to think about holding the millage the same, holding the fire fee the same, holding the waste fees the same, having additional services, taking, you know, accounting for all of the incredible inflation that we've seen over the last couple of years, and be able to deliver that to our residents is a huge win, a huge win, so.
Healthy reserves as well.
And healthy reserves as well, yeah, yeah. We, we are well above the minimum in reserves as well. That's a great point. Thank you, Bob. All right. I'm, I'm super proud of the work that has been done by the administration, Emile, your team, and I know all the departments get together and provide their feedback. You all have done an amazing job at finding savings where we can find it to be able to hold the line so that our residents have no increases this year. Amazing job by an amazing team, and I'm proud to be a part of that team. So, thank you all for what you've done. All right. So, now I think we need to read these items into the record. Where are you? There you are. One day, one day I'll get used to that.
Item five is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing findings, providing purpose, providing for provision and funding of fire protection services, providing for imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, providing legislative determinations of special benefit and fair apportionment, approving the final fire services assessment rates and final rule relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the town for fiscal year 2024-25, confirming an exemption for veterans with service-connected total and permanent disability, providing for effective adoption of resolution, providing for application of assessment proceeds, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, and I neglected to actually respond. So, the, the fire fee, one of the things that I'm proud about in, in our town, I, I joined the council back in 2006, is that we have, I think it was even before that, I'm not taking credit for it, but certainly from that point on, we have always not included our fire fee in, in our millage so that it was clear, it was transparent. So, you can compare millage rates over that entire period of time, and it's apples-to-apples. Fire fee has never been a part of it. All right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the fire fee. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor, for including the veterans. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, relating to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs to residential properties in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, for fiscal year 2024-25, commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025, providing authority for solid waste service assessment, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, providing for an exemption for veteran service-connected total and permanent disability, approving the assessment rule, and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Is there any further comment on this item? Seeing none, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and adopting the tentative millage rate for taxation of real property, lying within the boundaries of the town of Southwest Ranches for the fiscal year 2024-25, commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Is there any further comment on this item? Seeing none, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the budget of the town of Southwest Ranches for fiscal year 2024-25, commencing October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025, providing for a budget basis, providing for expenditure of funds, providing for carryover of funds, providing for notice, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the item. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, if you can, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski.
Yes.
Mayor Bry Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Thank you all for coming out.